Just want to kind of make sure everybody's on the same page. The first one is designed to test your eyesight. But, yes, that's right. Trying to save paper and ruin your eyes, I think, if you didn't plan so well. I think there's enough to have one. Kay brought this issue up earlier, so I won't spend much time on it. But this is an accounting of the cost of officers that are assigned to the school resource officer. And it goes through and lays out the base pay, the various supplemental pay times we have, like degrees, longevity pay, non-smoking, perfect attendance, flying fines, Christmas bonus, to come up with the total salary. And then there are benefits on top of that for social security and so on. Just to give you an idea of the actual total direct cost of these employees. As you got the memo earlier, Chief Overhold had this information provided to Kay. And prorated, these officers are not assigned every day of the working year to the school resource officer. So about a third of the time, they're able to do other functions for the city. So this is an idea of the direct cost. This came out of a question from the last meeting when we approved the contract. I'd also point out that it does not reflect the indirect costs for things like equipment and vehicles, training, or administrative overhead. But it gives you a feel for what the cost may be. So that was all I was trying to do there. And again, test your eyesight. So we've talked about this earlier, so I don't want to forget questions.
Tony, I'd just like to say I appreciate. I'm the one that asked that question, and she replied with the information. And I didn't know you were going to talk about it today. My plan was always to distribute it to the rest of council, as always. There, I think it would be interesting to see why we have differences in numbers there.
I think the, well, first off, he prorated part of it. I think that the original schedule had people from last year as opposed to people assigned this year. There was a bit of change of assignment, and then some surrounding that I couldn't, I didn't have the opportunity to reconcile because I hadn't seen the other number.
Did you prorate yours for the 180 days?
No, this is the full year.
This full year contract. So they do only serve 180, and they're back on the road, I believe, in doing their other duties.
And they have other, many of them are assigned to other special task forces that'll be doing the same.
I think, as we've talked about this, that it's definitely a good investment. And certainly, I'm not saying that we need to make any changes to the current program. I think it's been working well. And it's an investment in our youth, a protection of them for the future. So they have a future.
So I think what would be good for the city to encourage the county to look into that and make it more of a full-time process.
See, we had a conversation earlier. We assigned four officers, but I didn't know the number of county officers that were assigned to schools.
I believe they have two. I believe they have two full-time officers assigned to the school system.
Each high school?
Yes, they have an officer assigned to each high school.
Could you tell, we didn't know how many, we have four. Who's full-time and where do the others go at what? How do they rotate through the?
We have four. We have two that are in the high school, and we have two others who rotate through the middle schools. So we try to do that on a non-scheduled basis. They will have a schedule, but we don't want, we don't want anyone to be aware of when the officer will be there or not be there. Plus, we also do, the zone assigned officer does walk through through the middle schools as well to help support that program. So you may have an officer who is in the middle school, he gets tied up at one of the middle schools. So instead of not having police presence there that day, the zone officer will actually be doing, walk through the school as he can as well.
So we don't have anybody in the elementary schools at all?
No, we do not. We will assist if elementary school calls for assistance from the school resource program. We will assist with that, but we do not have anyone rooting in the elementary schools.
And again, as background, as I told you all earlier, thank you, Chief, that the reason I was asking the question is there are school systems that are moving toward hiring more and putting someone in, an officer in all schools for a lot of obvious reasons.
So my intent here was just to give you detailed information about the cost and allow you to have that as you consider what we're doing with you. Very similar to that, follow-up on a question that came from your last meeting. This is an accounting of the bond proceeds, the bond issues that we had. Gives you the amount that has been deposited, dispersed, even shows the interest earnings that we have made over the course of the bond to date. Again, just for your information, nothing earth-shattering here other than making sure you're in the loop with regard to the accounting process for the bond proceeds and kind of where we stand for the first issue. We're working on the second issue that should hopefully be put on the street next month. But if there are detailed questions about this, we'll have to go to Joey and see what we've got. But I wanted to give you an idea of kind of how much we've had on hand. The big drawdowns that we've had have been for purchase of land, the design process we've used for the fire station and the public works, and in the site work at the Public Works compound.
I would like to know the difference in what we're paying on the initial bond in interest for money borrowed, and I think I mentioned that to Joey briefly at the last work session that we had, and then the interest that we're earning. And I know it's, as you said, it's a fluctuating monthly interest, but overall, the bottom number versus what we're paying out, what we're getting.
The bond issue is basically 3% or a little bit more. Interest earnings are a little more than 1% rounding very, very grossly. But that's, we can get you a more precise number. But unfortunately, if there was a point in time in my career where you had to be concerned about arbitrage, where you could actually earn money, more money with investments than you're paying on the bond, we haven't had that case in many years.
And this 79, is that, that's not included in the ending balance over here, is it?
Yes, it is.
It is, so that is. So are we going to, we can talk about that another time, where we're going to use that.
The interest earnings will be part of the overall project budget as you're able to manage through the various projects you've got. But again, trying to keep you updated in the loop. The next piece I have for you, we talked in the work session at your last meeting about outstanding accounts receivable. This is a series of outstanding accounts. The ones that I'm doing now are the stormwater accounts receivable that have yet to be collected. And as you can see, the indicates the, how old they are, and the amount, and the person that it owes. The next two are garbage fees, same situation where these are outstanding garbage accounts that have not been paid. This particular schedule is Russell Whiteburg. And the final schedule is unpaid garbage fees from the property. You talk about selection efforts and success. This gives you a detailed reference on where the remaining amount is, kind of a feel for the types of aging, how old some of the accounts are, and who may be still delinquent. So I know it's a great deal of information, and you certainly don't want to sit down and read every bit of it, but for your reference, that's just an opportunity to see how much is outstanding and who owes it.
Tony, may I ask a question about the garbage?
Yes.
If I get one can free, if I want another can, I pay, what, $60 to say for it? If I want two cans in my street cur?
It's $52 right now.
Discount, all right. Senior citizen discount. So I pay for the second one, but do I pay $10 or $20 a month?
You get the $15 a month for every trash can that you have. So if you've got one right now and then you purchase one, then it'll be $30 a month.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't realize that I had a phone call, and I was giving them a discount. I was saying $10, sorry about that. Old, the old fee that they do, you do if you have two cans in the street, you pay two bits.
Pay twice as much to someone as well. So we do have, and we're working on, a list of delinquent property taxes that's not available now. We hope to have that at your next meeting. So again, just background, trying to give you information.
Tony, when it says somebody's name, that's still, I notice one of these that I'm familiar with, um, the garbage is deceased. Is that just his?
I know he's my pay.
So it's still in the system. That's something that Lauren and I have been working on with those in the collection, looking into ordinance, and that's what she brought to you and reported back last month with reported updates, which you had sent the letters out.
Okay, so that's receivable. We'll continue to work on that unless you have other questions. All right. Have a few items or issues with regard to disposal of the old Fire Station Number Four. We discussed that previously about, that we wanted to list it with the realtor. The realtor has recommended that we get a survey of the property to firm up the property lines. My best guess is that'll be about a $1,500 fee. Is there any heartburn over moving forward to getting the site surveyed as we're listed?
It has to be anyway.
Evan, I mean, that's commercial property getting surveyed, would that be standard practice or get thought?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we want to make sure that what we're selling is, what they're buying is what they think they're getting. So that's, that's.
Anything, especially with any kind of age on it, that hadn't been surveyed in the last few years, especially if they're a commercial property requires an updated office survey and was going to need kind of insurance ready. And that has to be to the insurance company, to the very standard.
So if you're comfortable with it, I'll ask that we get that survey done and get that trans-.
At what time would someone who's interested in looking at a property, who would they contact and when would they be able to contact?
Mr. Lebel has the listing. I don't know if he has access to the building yet or not.
No, he said to move forward with the listing agreement as you all directed last meeting.
A second issue with regard to Station Four involves the old furnishings that are still in the building. We, as you know, we've got some new furnishings, new equipment, that we didn't have to move everything. The question is, would you prefer to declare that property surplus separately and try and sell that or dispose of it? Or would you rather just lump it in with the building and sell it as is?
Would you, maybe a donation or something to, I don't know if Habitat Foods or Baptist Builders or.
Do you care about the donation for, whoever's buying Station Four property, carrying it down anyway? The, can you describe just in general, we don't need an inventory, but what's the condition of the stuff that's left behind?
The, there's a TV stand, a rather large TV stand, it's in very good shape. It was donated to the department by, for the current employees with the department. The rest of the stuff is pretty well-used and not necessarily fit to donate.
Could you not let the former employee have first shot at that TV stand or whatever it is and then donate the rest of it?
I requested that they take it back since they provided it. They said no letting go, so.
Joey, with regard to disposition of assets, what do we need to do if we want to make a donation or something? Is that something?
Would you get an accurate listing of what's there, a listing that you all approved to donate? Clearly donating with 501(c)(3), there's some specific statutes, advertising, those sort of things, but you all can declare a surplus and donate to any.
But the thing that, most of the furniture's really not in the condition.
No, it's just pretty well-used.
Is that building secured and under particular alarm protection or what?
Only under lock and key, not a lock.
Pretty effective lock and key, yeah.
What do you have, you have bunk beds or single beds, twin beds?
They were single twin beds, yes.
There is a church, a couple of churches coming up. If you wanted to, I mean, it's, you know, once one man's trash is another man's treasure, it might sell if you wanted. First Methodist is having one at the end of this.
I don't know that anyone will take an old mattress. I don't know about the frames.
I don't know, there's autumn up there, Mary Park.
Okay, Tommy can get the mattresses and take us to the. All right, but we'll come back to you with the list and let you see what we've got. I don't think there's a lot of value in that. Finally, with regard to Station Four, you had asked about getting the property appraised. Here's the appraisal report for the site. So that you can have the review at your leisure and discretion. Okay. The next one's going to be a little longer to get through the issues. Previously, you had directed us to move forward with the abandoning the right-of-way of Rosedale. We discussed that in workshop, but to some extent, I think Steve was covered most of the issues and questions unless you have something else. Obviously, we're in pretty good shape on the right-of-way that we'll be abandoning. I think that one got pretty well caught. But the, the second question is preparation of a deed to transfer the site to TCAT. Evan will be doing that, and I thought it might be worthwhile for him to get some input from you in terms of some of the details about what your thoughts are about transferring the site. So Evan, if you've got some thoughts.
Well, just in general, I looked at the property, all the map, and some general concerns in transferring the property, especially the two TCAT, because I noticed that they hold property a couple of different ways as far as title. So first, general concern is, you know, we got to figure out who would be bidding to, how they're going to take the title. The second is if we are not, we have to consider the timeframe when we will be able to, or ready to move off the property. Because obviously, if we deed the property then, and we still need to occupy it for a period of time, we're going to need to be some kind of an agreement or something negotiated with the TCAT center to let us occupy that property. The Rosedale, I touched base on that earlier. But then also, one concern that I need some direction with is, if you look at the property, the Girls Inc. utilizes a corner of that property. And how do you want that to be dealt with? Would we want to survey that out and leave that to Girls Inc.? Or how would that be dealt with?
Which part of the?
Girls Inc. doesn't, there's a section in there, a corner is what you're talking about?
If you look on, if you look on the map, it's like the northwest corner kind of of the property.
Which side of the creek is that?
It's right behind Girls Inc. You can see where they.
Right up next to the.
Yeah, it's like a row of, that row of trees behind there, and they utilize the inside of that row of trees. You can see they kind of use that as a, as a yard, basically. And then that, there's a row of trees that kind of separate. It's not a great amount of acreage.
So it's just something that's still.
Something that they, yeah, they've been using it. And I don't know, you know, anytime I see something that's been used for a period of time, there's some questions that come up about potential easements or that.
It never was, in your research, that it never was donated or anything, it wasn't split off?
It's still part of the city's property. It's just been.
Isn't it seven years after something's used, seven years?
They have a, they have a, there's a clause, it's adverse possession. But that's the thing, part of that, you have to use it adversely. So I don't know if it was ever said and permitted to them that they could use that.
Is it something that TCAT needs? Would they be utilizing that part of the property?
I think the creek really makes that not beneficial to them.
It's on the north side of the creek.
Yeah, it's on that.
It's on the north side.
Yeah, it's boring. They're not going to build a parking lot across the creek, so.
Probably park two cars.
If they went out there and walked the property, they probably didn't even, this portion probably wouldn't even consider, they probably didn't think that it was part of the property.
What people don't really know is that Girls Inc. doesn't own their property. It's owned by the Boys and Girls Club. And it's leased from the Boys, the Girls Inc. leases it, it's a hundred-year lease, leases it from the Boys and Girls Club. So you're really dealing with the Boys and Girls Club. That's what you are.
So there's some issues to be resolved, but the big one is, if you want to deed the property, you're more going to occupy it, we got to reconcile that something.
It's obvious that you use it.
Are you still president of the Boys and Girls Club?
As president, I can take it. I just.
Can you take that and let it be part of the Girls Inc. property? I mean, it's, you can't get to the Boys and Girls Club because of the creek and the trees.
I think it's logical to leave it. I don't think Jerry's going to build a, use TCAT. As you're saying, it's not usable for TCAT.
I would ask TCAT first. Then I would let Kay ask the, whoever the property belongs to. Obviously, the Girls Inc. is using it, they would like the property.
As, Tony, has TCAT seen a lay of that land on something official that they?
I think they've looked at a tax map, it's all they've been doing. And in reality, their building will be very much at the Rosedale sign. Where our buildings are will be parking for the facility, so. And get closer to the creek, it's flood plain.
They're not going to build anything over the creek then, probably.
And that's probably flood plain where the Girls Club uses.
So we, Evan, we just need to know what the process is. But what, if we're on an agreement, we just need to find out what do we need to do. Tommy said, talk to you.
Yeah, first, that would be determined, make sure you have an intention of a promise there or something, make sure it's understood what this is. Two, if we want to convey that to Boys and Girls Club or whoever wants to hold the title, we simply just need to have it surveyed out, and then we can transfer that one separately.
Whatever we have to do to expedite Rosedale being closed.
I think that's all.
Rosedale being closed and that property being.
But I don't think, I don't think we, if we have it surveyed or whatever, I don't think we ought to pay for the survey. I mean, if we're giving away land. Maybe that Boys and Girls Club can get somebody to donate to survey it and something.
I would need to bring John Seals, who's the director, in to talk about this. And it would, it would just seem logical. Just tell me when you want me to bring John to talk to you.
We can deed the property. Survey, likely to take it to the point where the creek is. And if we're deeding not all the property, a portion of it, we don't have to resurvey the part that goes to Girls Inc.
No, I would suggest surveying the part that we want to put to Girls Inc. And then what we convey to TCAT would be the deed wasn't accepted, that little portion.
So you're going to handle that if TCAT survey since we're donating a $400,000 piece of property.
And TCAT may very well need a survey for.
I'm sure they will.
For their contract. So it could be something they could work in and have it cut out and maybe they're serving.
So really, we've got three moving pieces on property. There's a little corner, Girls Inc., there's the big Dyce Street property, we think that was the Public Works, and then there's Rosedale.
Kay, would you come up, tell me, would they, as Evan was talking about, a move-out date or whenever the official? Would that be, in the deed, you can't have it pending? It has to be a definite date that they acquire the property?
I like as little restriction as possible, like short-term, a deed. A deed to property, and then you can work a, an agreement for post occupancy. Or you could reach an agreement with them that basically, kind of like a sales contract per se, where we'll deed the property to you. This, at this time, we have so many days to move our facilities, something like that. It can be either done preceding the deed or subsequent to.
Right now, the construction schedule, if there are no delays, is we will be off the site late March, early April 2020. I think TCAT would like to have something in their hands, more concrete than a promise to do something in 2020, but we got to be able to still operate. And I think that's part of the issue we had to wrestle with.
I was told that they need Rosedale closed and they need the deed to that property. It's the way it was told to me.
So you want Evan to work with a transfer deed with some sort of agreement to occupy? Is that, that's a guide?
I think that's what we need to do. We don't need to take any chances of any, by any means, for this to be delayed any longer than it has to because of the transitions of the governor's office and all those things that could be happening.
So I need to let you call me, let you, because you'll need to talk to John, or you need to talk to the Boys Club at all?
What would they say? I'm sure they're going to say, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, since you've figured out how it needs to be surveyed, this will just be a gift to the Boys Club, maybe to the Girls Club right there.
I think the first, the communication with TCAT and whoever's handling this building, build out of this expansion.
And the current campus has two title holders, right? The state of Tennessee's one and the Board of Regents is another.
It's, there's, there's Board of Regents and, but they're, it's Board of Regents and then it's like two or three divisions. Because they own a big tract and they own like four or five lots down Dyce Street. So, and each one of them has a little different variance in their name. So I don't know how they would, I mean, in a conversation with whoever's over there with TCAT.
Does the state have a building authority or something that handles all their property transactions instead?
They do. I don't know though that it's, the Board of Regents may be separate, and I'm not certain about that.
Jerry Young has already told us that they've completed the parking lot, and that's done. So he's apparently knowing who construction people are, who that is, so just put in contact with them to get you to the right people.
Yeah.
So we've got some work to do. We've got some initial direction. Are you comfortable with what we got so far, Evan?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Have you got it done yet?
So we'll come back and keep you in the loop again, as we indicated. The planning commission is looking at Rosedale. That will probably be the first piece you'll be able to act on and see an official formal status. On your next agenda, you will see an application for a Class III or construction and demolition landfill located at Lowen. Lauren has prepared this document that outlines our rights, responsibilities, and what is known as the Jackson Law, which we have the authority to talk about the location of landfills within our community. And this site will be within the city of Morristown. The Solid Waste Board has already voted that the location of this landfill will be in compliance with the county's solid waste management plan. And so we're moving forward. Steve is handling. And so we're moving forward, Steve is handling the application for staff, and Steve, can you come bring him up to the debate?
All right, I had this map made up to help show you what we're exactly, what part of the project that. Lauren did a great job going over the provisions. As Tony pointed out, under the Jackson Law, any type of landfill requires local and county approval. And as part of that, there's a thirty day prior public notice that has to be posted, which if you look up lobby, there is a posting of that for the meeting on the eighteenth. As Tony said, this is a Class Three landfill, it will accept farming waste, landscaping and land clearing debris, construction, demolition debris, shredded automobile tires, and any other waste that T-DEC Division of Solid Waste feels appropriate. This is basically a two-step process, first step, prior to being able to go to, the T-DEC is, it has to be approved by both the municipality and the county. If it's turned down by either one of them, it does not go forward. So what will be before you on the eighteenth is really just approval of the appropriateness of the location. This is kind of looking at what the surrounding land uses are, what the impact of the truck traffic will be, and overall zoning. Once it's approved by the city and the county, then T-DEC will approve it and will approve the design of the plan and review the soils and the operating procedures. And that's kind of a quick and dirty, like I said, I provided you with the map so you can see where it is, it's to the back of the current Inco Plant Facility.
Steve, is this surrounded by landfills? It looks that way.
Yes.
So it's...
And, I mean, this, you gotta put a site, it's between the landfills and the super fund sites and brownfield sites, this is probably as good a location as you can hope for.
So the buildings that were on it, there were buildings previously on this site? That have been removed?
I'm not familiar with that.
I don't think the proposed site has had buildings on it, I think this is the rear of the buildings that were there for the...
I, I think we need to be sure that these, these properties are not on any of these other lists or any lists owing any kind of fees to the city. That would be my, my, before we can grant a landfill, it needs to be clear property, cleared, cleared deeded property with no liens against it.
Steve, is the, the location we're talking about, is it behind the Chucky River Road there or further?
There are two parcels that are being questioned, they're outlined in yellow.
Does this require, this type, does this require different type of minor treatment or...
Previously, councilmen had been asked to consider a Class One landfill a number of years ago, and that takes household gardens. This is very much more construction demolition debris, wood, brick, inert materials. It has a liner, but not the same restriction in terms of what will be done, and all that will be handled by T-DEC if we approve the location. But, yeah, there are lesser requirements for a Class Three landfill than a Class One.
Does it still have to have a drainage system for the leachate?
I'm thinking it does have a control system for, for my side.
And that would then, would that then be handled by the Lowland Waste Water Treatment Plant?
Yeah, the, the other three landfills on this site all drain to that wastewater.
And do you agree that we, this should be clear property, I mean, no fees, no liens?
I looked through Lauren's report and see what's your ability to, your criteria you can have on your decision, I think that's, that's something we need to look at. To my mind, it would make a much stronger application if it came pretty clear.
And city property?
Well, it's, it's within the city.
It's within the city. Anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
This is a different conversation, huh?
Evan, what do you think? Should it be clear of any, any fees owed to the city?
It'd be the annex, it's what it's on. I don't think that's a legal question. It's worth it.
It's not a legal question?
I mean, should it be?
I mean, before we approve something, I'm asking you, the attorney.
Well, I guess I took your question in the wrong.
Okay.
Actually, that's fair enough. I don't know of any, as far as it's, I don't know of any law I'd have to look into as far as based on a landfill, approving a landfill with liens. But I mean, I, I would think that before we, I mean, we could do a search on the property and determine what's, what's there, so then we would actually know what we're doing and what to discuss in detail.
Well, assuming these people are gonna buy this property and they would then incur anything that's, that's owed on the property, correct?
I, I'm not sure that it's a sale or if it's a mutual operation. But I believe you'll find, if you look in the materials we handed out earlier, there are outstanding stormwater fees, and I believe there are outstanding property taxes.
No, I don't think it's a sale.
I think that we, I think it should be, be pretty clear of any city fees or whatever if we approve something. Because if we have to go up on people's property tax to make payment on what we want, and then someone has owed the city for many years, I don't think that's, I don't think that's right.
The only thing about that is, we got a bunch more than we gotta throw in that...
Well, I agree, yeah, I, I say get them off.
Oh, I would, I'd love that.
I mean, that, that would prevent, have it go up on...
Some other builders.
Yeah.
And that'd be some good newspaper stuff there. Watch, Bob, you're in.
But, this is scheduled to come on, on your next agenda, and to give you the, the heads up, if you have any questions that aren't resolved, we can work and intervene in two weeks to get it done.
Well, if, if there's an indication among the council that approval's not forthcoming, if there's outstanding balances owed to the city with the petitioner being inclined to have the option to withdraw for consideration of council, to know what the answer's gonna be.
We can convey that to the applicant.
I mean, have we, it's a unique situation in one way, that it's a landfill, but it's still, it's still granting a use for a piece of property that we knowingly, we know and we knowingly granting it with fees owed on it. And I don't know who all's involved in that, I haven't read through your five thousand pages of documents yet.
Well, I did, did dog ear that page, I guess I should have.
It's kind of Kevin Ossport, it's recording. There's all this...
I, I think, I don't think they're just mixing words here when they say fees owed, they're actually delinquent. And notice to pay, and if not, delinquent is a probably more accurate description.
I think if the site has delinquent, it's stormwater fees, and...
Was that the inclination, I think, as we know, with work session, we're not voting, but we can bob heads up and down, I guess, if we, do we...
No, you can't. You can't, no.
Not asking for the vote. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, is there...
I hope not, yes.
You go, yes? I really think we would be setting...
Based on comments that you've heard this council say, I, I, you could, uh, share those comments with the person who's, whoever that might be.
I'm just concerned we'd be setting a precedent, we would be knowingly setting a precedent. And I think that Ken's comment about increasing property taxes on everyone, and then you have something where we know that the fees, as you mentioned, mayor, are delinquent, they're not just fees, they're delinquent fees.
But I think we also have to agree that we can't single anybody out.
That must, should be vindictive.
No, no.
It should be, it should be everybody.
Oh, yes, everybody, this, this happens...
Just because they've got an opportunity to sell a piece of property doesn't, doesn't encourage us to collect a fee. If, if a fee's delinquent, it's delinquent.
You don't go after them, you're gonna have to go after the rest of these builders that are delinquent too, or you'll be treated unfairly.
Well, then that's, has, has Planning Commission brought something to us to approve, knowing that there are fees owed by the builder? If so, that we need to talk to the Planning Commission.
Play the question and then cut forward, play the question. But this one is not. The Solid Waste Board, you know, the Solid Waste Company.
Okay, but we're gonna be sold on the tax, on, on the courthouse steps, the fees would have to be attached to it correctly, I mean, correct? Uh, you're saying this is probably, and I'm sure I'm stepping on somebody's toes and have big feet.
It wouldn't be the courthouse steps, it'd be at the closing table, when it's probably sold.
If it's sold, it would be clear that it was...
Yes.
If it was saved.
Yeah, if, if they're delinquent taxes, they're typically...
They're set at that closing.
If it's stormwater fees and we filed a lien, it would be resolved at that time.
If there's a lien.
If there's a lien.
Tell me, those delinquent taxes, all that, take the piece of property where the landfill is located?
My understanding is that's correct, that there are outstanding property taxes on the two parcels being considered.
But still, you all said, you're gonna have to find out if it's a sale or just a lease or a...
We're playing games right now. We need to, we need to know those particulars.
What I, what I wanted to do is to make sure you're prepared, because the applicant will be before you, you know.
It sounds like with a lot of other things, we need some more time, and it may be the best thing to not put it on the next agenda.
The state law is pretty specific about the timeline from application to here. There are notice requirements that are, the notification that have to put notice within a certain radius of the site and...
I mean, yes, when the process started, they had to post notice at least thirty days prior to the meeting. And there is a, they will have the post sign, which these will be, is up now, or will be up shortly, indicating that there's a public hearing to be held.
So one of the things you might run into, if you find inadequate information and don't want to deny the application, you could postpone the decision to the board.
Not table?
No, not table, I, I chose my words carefully.
I've never been to meetings, I've heard that you table it and post it at such time, it's just a change in nomenclature. Um, I think that if they had to notify Planning Commission thirty days ahead, and this is two weeks after the planning, that's what, thirty, forty something days that this has been in the works and...
This has not been to the Planning Commission.
Then where's the thirty days?
The thirty days is under the Jackson Law, that you have to post a notice that there'll be a, a meeting to discuss or a vote on this. The public hearing is only required if there is someone of interest speaks up against it. But to be on the say side, we went ahead and posted, to make sure people had an opportunity.
So the clock started on the thirty days, the day you posted it?
The, the day we received the application.
The day you received the application. Which was the sixteenth.
Sixteenth of, of August?
Of August. And then there's, like I said, you go out through the lobby, you see the public notices.
I just feel like we're getting jammed in there with very little time to really, with the questions that have been brought up today.
Well, the overall timetable, you know, this is about a two-year process. I called the state and asked them how long to take to get approval of a facility like this, and they said, generally, depending on the, the facility, it takes up to two years. So another thirty days, two weeks, I don't know if it'll make that much of a difference. But we would, like I said, I strongly agree with Tony that we defer this, if there's any questions, so we don't have to start the notification or public hearing notice again.
And we can defer it, we can defer it to the next meeting in October.
That's why he's paying the big bucks, he gets nod his head.
I think there are a lot of questions, I think Tommy's right, we need, we need some answers here, about how this could be resolved, the plan, uh, that, for resolving the outstanding fees on the property. Uh, if we move ahead, something that says they're gonna...
I'm not asking for any head bobbing, but I think the city administrator can interpret remarks, and let me hear everybody speaking against me on this, so.
Okay, so landfill, still perking, we'll keep you informed with the forms. Perking, perking, see? I'm getting tired, it's late, late in the night. Few more items, I've got three more on my list, the next one, financial advisor. You're aware, we're working forward on getting the, the next bond issue prepared. You approved a contract with Cumberland Securities to be your financial advisor, which you explicitly indicated that it should be only for the bond issue that we're currently doing. The problem that we see on the horizon is, there is a, a bond that M U S. plans to refund in March. Requires a ninety day notification, and in order to prepare those documents, we need a financial advisor on, on contract. If your desire is to move forward with soliciting quotations and selecting a financial advisor from a larger pool, we would need to move forward quickly in order to allow you to select your financial advisor for that next bond issue. Or alternatively, you could consider extending the existing contract with Cumberland Securities for the next bond issue. But we need some guidance from council about your desire for the issue that will be coming up in March.
Who's handling the refunding for M U S.? Cumberland does that?
Cumberland is the one that's handling it, because it's our debt, they're doing it. M U S. has hired a, a person to make, to help them through the process, and that's Raymond James that was here.
They don't have any borrowing power.
That's right, and, and it's your debt, will you underwrite all the debt, even though they paid for it with their fees, you're still ultimately responsible, and you need to have your, your folks on hold. So I didn't know if you wanted to go back out to the market and solicit proposals and interview people and select one, or consider extending your contract to Cumberland Securities.
You said we have ninety days to, they need ninety days, can we think about this until our next meeting?
Yes, I think that you've got, March is the, the refunding date, you've got ninety day notice to, to the bond fund. We've got certain things we need to file with the comptroller prior to that, so it starts to cascade, but we certainly have a couple of weeks, but not a couple of months.
Wouldn't it make more sense just to extend the contract we had?
That, that will be my recommendation. There are about four active in the state that you might consider if you want to, but I think we've been getting a reasonable product in return of Cumberland Securities, and it's much easier to do that, but that's, it's up to your, your preference.
Well, all the preference I was looking at, Cumberland Securities is the conversations that I've had with people who dealt with Cumberland in the past, in Morristown. And I'm not, I don't know how much that was true, how much is not true, but, um, I think that we can make the decision by the next meeting to decide whether to continue or to go out on the market.
Okay, so I'll put that back on my list of questions to get resolved at, at the next meetings. Uh, down to two more. Community Development Want Grant Beside Program. As you know, we've had a program for a good while to provide a, a matching grant to upgrade storefronts. We started downtown, we've expanded the area, now there's two sheets.
Oh, two sheets, I'm sorry.
What I'm handing out is a map from this year and the proposed consideration of expanding the area... and the proposed consideration of expanding the area for a, a broader area to get more applications. We expanded into Cumberland, hoping to get some, some of those properties addressed. However, we didn't get a tremendous response from that area. And, uh, we're not getting enough applications to move forward and be effective. So the, what we're asking you to consider is, on the proposed map, to extend off, onto, uh, the A J to allow us to have more potentially eligible businesses. It does move the focus away a little further from downtown, that it might get us some, uh, additional improvements on that corridor. But we didn't want to move forward with expanding the, the area without some input from you on.
Now, this will be, Tommy, just on, it wouldn't be on franchise businesses, it would just be a person. Have that for, if you go down West A J.
Yeah, talk about eligibility and kind of how, there's a committee that reviews it. Tracy, talk about how, how we can handle that.
Yeah, there's, like I said, there's a committee that reviews every application that comes in. Source franchiser, you're talking like a, I'm trying to think of an example.
Go, James. Go, James, McDonald's, all that on the west end of town. If we're going down the West A J, I don't know how many.
The way it's written right now, as long as you're the business owner, you can apply for the funding.
Well, let's plug that up a little bit.
I don't want to get my money wrong.
I think we can find some language that says mom and pop.
Yeah, we can do that.
Other than Ken's favorite.
We haven't had to address that, because we've been in the mom and pop area of town up to this point.
I mean, that's, that's what it's designed to do, is to help small businesses over.
How far out? North Cumberland, as you go, Tracy.
To twenty-five. That's, yeah, all the way.
But your efforts to get applicants is not getting a whole lot of response.
No.
Have we passed the deadline? Are we, is that where we're?
No, we're not, we're right on it.
Right on the deadline. What, what, what is that date?
We can adjust it for back a little bit.
So it hasn't passed yet?
No, 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 no.
Does it still include the downtown area also?
Yes.
Would this be a one-time, or would this be definitely increasing it?
I think it would be an annual evaluation. If it didn't work, we could constrict it, or if you get enough applicants, we might consider expanding.
I think that would be language I would, I would include.
There's not any businesses on, um, East A J and, uh, Morris Boulevard that could benefit from that.
I'm sure that East A J, state's fixing to take a lot of, a lot of that up to their name.
Well, they're only from twenty-five E on. And we've got an area, it looks to me like we've got an area there that's more downtown than all the way out to eleven E, but, I mean, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not, I don't know.
Why, why did you suggest the, the expansion you did?
The one down to, uh, try and catch all the, that corridor, because it's the main corridor where everybody's coming in. And when that Sprout sixty-six is complete, that's the, the first thing people see when they come into Morris Town. It's gonna be.
The first thing they see when they come in from twenty-five E is either Morris Boulevard or East A J. And there's some businesses down East A J that, that's only quarter, a half a mile downtown that probably could utilize that.
And I, I think you're, I, I like this, this is new amount to Buffalo Trail, right? That's gonna, gonna capture some businesses you're talking about.
At Buffalo Trail?
Buffalo Trail, that's, um, you mount with the lake, the old way.
No, I'm talking about A J Highway.
Right, I'm just saying this is an added section too.
Well, we, we tried that this year, right, Buffalo Trail?
Did you get a lot of interest in that?
I'm talking about from Liberty Hill, what I see here, from Liberty Hill to, excuse me, from Liberty Hill to twenty-five E.
At East Main Street. Is that what you referred to?
I referred to East A J Highway.
They changed to, uh, main changes to A J and, uh, Home Trust.
Home Trust.
Home Trust. Main, not main, First North, that's not main. That's First North.
That's First North.
Well, I just know I have an office out on, on East A J, and I'm, and ours is in good shape, but I noticed that there are others from there to Home Trust that looks like they could be rehabbed by somebody. I don't know whether they, I just want, I think we need to get in a position that we think, when we talk about Morris Town, we talk as much about East Morris Town as we talk about West Morris Town. You know, we've got a lot of conversation going on about Merchant Green, everything moving that way. And even you made reference to when people come into town. Well, people come into town in, in a lot of different directions. And we need to be cognizant of, of, of all the directions they come into town, and what our town looks like when those people come in on those streets.
Tracy, uh, do we wait for the applications to come to us? Or do we go out knocking on doors of potential, uh, recipients of the brand? Do we do some recruiting?
I was planning on doing that this year, doing some door knocking on the places we'd like to see something done.
Well, imagine, there's a certain amount of diplomacy to it, you don't knock on the door and say, hey, you could use an upgrade.
No, I would canvass the area.
You could start sort of like you're the Republicans Clearinghouse guy. Say, hey, we got some money on you, friend.
I might take one to Tom's Sporting Goods and skip over to Walmart Neighborhood Market.
Yeah, well. I just want to recruit. We'd like to be in a situation where we had so many applications, we couldn't fund them all. Being, I think the ones that are most deserving would have the most impact. But right now, we're struggling to find enough people to make applications.
Well, years ago, that was a problem downtown, while we had many more applications than we had. For a couple of years, we couldn't get anybody to try it out, and then once it got going, it sort of steamrolled.
Did Debbie Heider went western auto, put one in, she's interested, she hadn't gotten it in yet.
Not yet, I mean, we're gonna have.
Knocked on her door.
Our, our previous, like, downtown folks who, uh, or not just downtown, but also South Cumberland, folks who didn't anticipate before, are they still eligible, or as it was? One year using or losing?
They're still eligible. We had a couple of people last year that weren't able to complete it in the timeframe given, but they're welcome to come back. And you can get in, you can get one one year and get another one the next year, it depends on the community.
But I would hope that the need would, taking into consideration, some of you got the funds and didn't utilize them. But we're looking for quality applicants, looking at the corridors. Are you comfortable with that, or you want to come back with modified recommendation?
Looks like I'm not getting anywhere with East A J Highway.
I think that's good.
I just, I just don't see when we're took, looking at downtown, and we started this, then all of a sudden, we switch and we take everything in the western direction. We take nothing to the eastern direction.
My question was on that, Tommy, it looked like he had, and maybe that's it. Tracy, is that East Main Street, or is that First North that you've got?
I think it's got East Main going out to Liberty Hill Road.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Yeah. But yes, I'm, I'm all for going east.
There's a lot of buildings out there that need to be rehabbed. Now, I don't know whether they would make an application, and, and, or not, that's. But, but there's some out there that need.
Well, we've had East Main to Liberty Hill this year, do we get any applications?
Wasn't this year, but one year, the Federal Steeze, I think we've got, is the Cameron Castle.
Has anybody ever thought about going to twenty-five E? Y'all keep talking about Liberty Hill, there's a lot going on from Liberty Hill to twenty-five E.
I'm just looking.
On Morris Boulevard and on East A J Highway.
So, you map? Is that what I'm hearing?
And East A J.
Uh, uh, East A J and Morris Boulevard.
Yeah.
I think you'll find the East Morris Boulevard, Boulevard has got newer buildings, because it's a newer street.
Right, exactly.
And, and you don't have as many dilapidated buildings as you do on, on, on East A J.
Well, you don't have to be dilapidated, you just.
Well, uh, we have.
We might even get a.
All right, we'll come back with each other, let you look at it, but we need to get, get applications out there to get applications back, so, we'll work on that, please. I have one more item, and I know that we present, I'm gonna ask Steve to come up and talk about some new standards from the post office, and how they impact some of those.
Um, once again, I got a little memo. This was a letter we received from the Tennessee representative for the post office.
They lease all those now, don't they? They not build them, they lease them.
Well, the, in the relatively recent past, these cluster box have been, you've seen them in apartment complexes, and you've seen them in commercial developments. Now, they'll be required in all new single-family stuff. So instead of having the traditional mailbox out in front of your house, they'll be going to these cluster boxes.
So like Carlisle's new subdivision?
Will be impacted by this, yes, sir. Actually, what I know is what you see before you, and I said there's a letter, and then there's also a few pages of the justification. Here, we haven't been impacted by it, Mr. Carlisle's will be the first. I know in the tri-cities, there have been a few subdivisions that have gone in, and developers are upset. And I understand that the state home builders are trying to put together some sort of objection that they can take forward.
It goes right up here with the small scale towers, doesn't it?
It, it does. I, I, I can tell you, at, at our fall conference, which is later this month, some from the post office is gonna come and speak on this. Like I said, this is all very new to us, but we wanted you to be aware of it, because this does impact, and you'll see with, with subdivisions, it will impact them significantly.
What about the newspaper? Are they going to, um?
They gonna?
Are they gonna start putting it in one place?
That's a good question.
We have mailboxes.
I'll be through you under the bus here.
Well, listen, that people that are getting their mail in mailbox now.
Not now. We have a subdivision that's currently, I won't say, there are homes currently under construction, the Alf of Bright Pike, Stone Ridge, or Stone.
Stone, um, yeah.
Anyways, because that was approved prior to April first, uh, this year, um, its grandfather. But anything after that date, the plans have to be submitted to the post office for their review.
Is it just subdivision?
Yeah, well, it'll impact any new commercial project, apartment complex, or subdivision. Subdivisions is the one that impacted most, because a lot of the newer commercial developments have more centralized mail.
I think it was maybe Franklin Square was one of the first ones, when, I think the way they had, it was subdivision regulations required you have a certain kind of mailbox, which you could buy from your homeowners association, and I think Saint Ives may have done the same thing, and Hampton West came along about that time or later, where you, subdivision restrictions told you what kind of mailbox you had to have, and who you could buy it from. But, uh, I would imagine, like with Carlisle's Place, or, or any of them, I, I think those kind of requirements popped up in those subdivision.
Well, I mean, you're right, a lot of the more upscale subdivisions, you, you see that, though. Any new subdivision that comes in, they're gonna have to meet federal guidelines. You cannot create subdivision complexes that supersede state or federal. Or your local ordinances.
And it's cluster mailboxes, isn't it?
Right.
So your subdivision's gonna work just like an apartment complex, where you go to the community mailbox and get your mail.
I think it's interesting, on the last page, it says that the average mailbox per address costs a hundred and fifty dollars. I, my mailbox didn't cost a hundred and fifty dollars. But, um, this is also gonna eliminate those stone pillars right at the end of your driveway that you can't, that impede your visibility, isn't it?
Well, yeah, if you have those brick mailboxes, it probably would, yeah, my plastic mailbox, it cost me thirty dollars, but, and, and if you're interested, I, I can bear you, but I'll, I'll send you, got all the guidelines and, uh, development standards on what they look like.
That's your nighttime reading, I'll let you read that out. So we have no choice in this necessarily?
No. At least not right now, I, I said, I, I know in tri-cities, there's a group trying to, and I'm sure it's everywhere, but they're lobbying to change. But my understanding is this is a co-see method for the post office.
Congressman Rose, representative was here a while ago.
Yeah, I have just some time.
We did like that. All right, so we just wanted you to be aware of that one, because even though we have no choice, the developer would not believe that we didn't create this. So you'd like to prepare about it, and I just want you to be aware.
This one is part of our ongoing change.
That is my list, we got a number of things that we can follow up on. I've got a number of issues that we didn't get onto this list, we'll follow them again.
Okay, I'm adjourned.